I think just continue. You could say we're recording the meeting.
Okay, we're recording the meeting and I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you Cory. And Anthony, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Since this is hybrid, I think we will have to do a roll call vote.
She can just raise her hand though, because we can see her.
Okay, so all those in favor, if you would please physically raise your hand. Okay. And that's everybody, so motion passes.
You could just say, Julie just asked, we did start this recording a couple of months late, the meeting was called to order at 6:32. There was no public comment and Cory read the operating norms.
Thank you.
It isn't connecting what you're asking.
Okay, so we're moving on to the presentation on learning, student learning.
All right, so we are, you are our first sort of role go around with this this year. So Meadow, you're getting our, you're going to get our first presentation and Skylar La Bombard is here. He's our Director of Teaching and Learning. He's joining us, he's going to present our SU goals. And then Brooke is going to talk about Meadowwee School's goals. So, so I want to let the board know that before Skylar goes, when we are at Meadowwee and Ticonic and Green, we're giving sort of a broad overview of SU information. Oh, do you need me to give you rights or something? Do I have to do that? Skylar, do I have to give her rights? Can't she share?
I'm good.
Okay, so we're going to give you an overview. When we have the BRSU Board Meeting at the end of the month, we will be taking a much deeper dive into the RSU data. So we'll be recording that meeting and make it available to you. But if you also want to come if you're not on the board, because you're interested in more understanding of like macro level SU data, I encourage you to come to that meeting, okay? So this is kind of our general overview, the focus being on schools at this, at the Meadowwee and TNG Board Meetings. Okay? All right, Skylar, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. Well, first of all, good evening, everyone. Happy to be here and give you an overview of the BRSU SU Goals. We'll revisit the goals that we had set last year as an SU and then briefly discuss goals that we've set this year after reviewing whether or not we've met those from last. So I guess I'll just tell Brooke to click through a slide, please. So the state of Vermont has a number of different goal areas for school systems to set goals. But the two that are required from a compliance standpoint are, we must have goals in the area of academic proficiency and also a goal in the area of safe and healthy schools. So those bulleted points are just some of the things that fall under the umbrellas of academic proficiency and safe and healthy schools. Go ahead, Brooke. Last year, we set an academic proficiency goal that was based on our computer adaptive assessment iReady. I'm sure you have had, if you have children in the school, you've probably had some level of relationship with iReady because it was something that we implemented last year. And it's a testing system, but it also provides digitized personalized instruction as well. So our goal that we had set last year was to think about our instructional model and have 65% of our students representing historically marginalized groups achieve annual typical growth, which is a metric that iReady uses in the areas of reading and mathematics. Obviously, we dealt with a historic year with the global pandemic. But we felt when we, when we set this goal to really focus on historically marginalized groups because we felt like a high tide raises all ships. So as you can see, the 2021 results as based on taking this assessment three times a year. In the spring, we had 47% of all students meeting in reading and 42% of all students meeting in mathematics. So while this doesn't necessarily speak to historically marginalized populations, the next slide will. We do know that we did miss the mark with our general population students as well. Interestingly enough, iReady is a normed reference assessment, which means that it, it's N size, so that the sampling of students that it operates from is about four and a half million kids. And because it's norm reference, it tends to stray toward the middle. So setting an expectation that 100% of our kids meet their annual progress toward annual typical growth, it's not exactly how the assessment is designed. So Brooke, go ahead, thank you. So you can see we broke these out into subcategories. We have students with IAPs and this is grades K to eight. So this assessment covers all kids. So for the sake of Meadowwee, your K to six population is in here somewhere. And we have about 1,000 kiddos in the SU, so that the number of students who took the test is around 1,000. So we had, if a student was on an IAP, 40, around 40%, so 39% of our students on IAPs made their annual typical growth. This was a little bit less than students that were not on IAPs. So there's a little bit of disproportionality there. Same can be said for reading and economically disadvantaged. 43% of those students met their annual typical growth. So how that number is generated is it takes a look at a student's performance on the assessment in the fall and projects that out. It reaches into that 4.5 million kiddo dataset, finds a kid who has a similar demographic and uses statistics to project out what's a reasonable annual growth for that kid. And you can see in the area of math, again, slightly less disproportionality in both areas, but disproportionality nonetheless. So that is to say, if someone is a member of one of these historically marginalized groups, it's less likely that they will meet their annual growth goals. So there are some real implications there. Go ahead, Brooke. So that's iReady, that was the goal from last year. So the other big assessment that we use and that the state's annual snapshot is generated from is the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. And that is SBACK. So again, if you have children in our schools, I'm sure you've heard about SBACK. It happens once a year. Typically, in the spring, we try to have folks think about May. This year was different. I know plenty of our schools, I'm not really sure where Meadowwee landed on their testing window, but people may have elected to assess a little earlier. The SBACK assessment was actually canceled by the state of Vermont for the 1920 school year. So when COVID hit in mid-March, the assessment was canceled. So this is our student performance. Again, this assessment, though, is only for grades three through eight. And there's about 670-ish students who took this assessment. So that would have been your third through sixth grade at Meadowwee is in, is in this dataset specifically. So you can see the state of Vermont is the green bar. So as a point of reference or some context, you can see that for ELA, we are right on the nose. And I can tell you that the N size for this from the state is about 31,000 students took this assessment in grades three through eight. So you can see we performed less than stellar, and this is a percent of the student population. This is no longer percent that met annual typical growth. This is proficiency as measured by the state assessment, which again is the publicly reporting assessment that the state uses. So we scored below the state, but I would, I would also say that, that the state average in general, 34% is significantly less than is typical, as is our performance in math here. Pretty much across the board nationwide, multiple testing companies had talked about data trends. And we saw a significant reduction in the number of students nationwide that are proficient in math specifically. Go ahead, Brooke. So when we take a look at SBACK, again, this is our SU performance over time. The first year they gave the assessment was the 1415 year. So just to contextualize, because I'm not sure how familiar people are with the SBACK, it is a computerized assessment as well. And it exists, actually exists for science as well, but only fifth graders and eighth graders take it in science. So out of the years that SBACK has been available, so data prior to this date, prior to the 2014 year, came from an assessment called NECAP, which were paper-based assessments that we don't necessarily have great records for as much as we do for SBACK. So you can see over time, there's been a steady decline. You can see the absence of the year 2019, 2020, because that, again, that was the year that SBACK was canceled by the state. You can see kind of a precipitous drop in math, given that gap year. So that led us to set goals using SBACK as a metric as opposed to iReady. Go ahead, Brooke. So we had established goals as just a desire to return to pre-pandemic levels. So when we take a look at ELA, that's a 7% increase, so that's 7% of our student population. And for SBACK, again, that's grades three through eight. And then for math, it's significantly of a larger leap with a 13% increase to return us to pre-pandemic levels. So it's real, it's real numbers, it's real work. And we're hoping that with mathematics instruction, we can, I guess, counteract maybe the effect that the absence of in-person, of in-person learning in the traditional sense had on mathematics, because that's kind of the national consensus is that math wasn't taught well at a distance or given the technology constructs that COVID cast us against. So those are academic goal areas. Questions on those? Do we want to wait for questions till the end? Okay. Someone's, Brooke, you look like someone's talking.
I was talking, but I muted you and I forgot to give you. I said, let's just wait till the next one. I apologize if I was unmute, I was trying to interact with you.
Okay, no worries.
I'm talking when I'm not talking.
Yeah, it's, and you're not even on camera.
That's one, right.
Okay, so safe and healthy schools. This is kind of like behavioral management, social emotional health, those types of things. So the, the goal that we had set in the 2021 school year was that coordinated effort would be made across schools to address the social emotional well-being of students. Obviously, with COVID, we knew that social emotional learning would be a huge area of focus and that our students would need support. And we are looking for a 10% of reduction of significant incidents reportable to the state. So that term significant incidents reportable to the state can include a variety of different behaviors. Typically, it's anything that a student might be suspended for or any kind of bullying, harassment, hazing. And again, this is across the SU, so about 1,000 kids. Our 2021 results was a 50% reduction, obviously, and that is scaled to a full school year. So from the 1920, since we ended the in-person schooling in, in March, essentially, I took what we had and then used the ratio of the number of days we had left to project out what our significant incident number would be. And last year, we had 24. So we saw a significant shift in behavior. Some students weren't in school to, to be in a situation where they might have an incident that's reportable. And what we did find through some of our schools and systems that were put into place was that transition areas specifically were significantly less. So for example, students maybe spent less time in the hallway because of controlled pods with COVID concerns. And that prevented a lot of situations that might be less supervised than we would like. So, so we were able to hit our safe and healthy schools goal. And lastly, the, the safe and healthy schools goal for this year is pretty significant. So there is something called the Psychological Sense of School Membership Scale, which I believe Randy has hard copies there for you to take a look at. It is 18 questions. And it is, it's a valid survey tool that's been around since the 90s. And it measures sense of belonging, essentially. So this survey is featured in a book called, now I can't, I totally can't remember the, I know the author.
Belonging to a culture of dignity.
Belonging to a culture of dignity, right. And that's something that we did a book read on, and actually, there was a statewide book read on, on that work as well. So the goal here is, it's on a five-point Likert scale. So kids answer the questions on a one to five scale. And ultimately, the mean, we would average up all of that scores and come out with a number. That number would be our baseline and we would conduct, as we conduct the survey in September, the goal would be to conduct the survey again with May with the same dataset, asking the same students with time to make changes and responding to the results from September. And the goal that we're setting is a 0.5 mean increase. So a 0.5 increase on a five-point scale is about a 10% if we wanted to put it in a better, more understandable parlance, it would be like a 10% increase in students that are feeling like they belong in their school. And those are our two goals at the SU level. As Randy alluded to, we'll go significantly deeper at the SU on board meeting, because I know I wanted to make sure that Brooke has the space to talk about Meadowwee's individual goals.
Why don't we transition to Brooke and then we can have a discussion once you've heard the SU goals and then where Brooke is, that way it's kind of got a good flow. All right, is that okay for you?
Perfect.
If you want us to mute and silence it, then you can turn yours on if you want. If it's, if it's easy and quick for you to turn it on, you want to, that's fine.
Can you hear me fine, Skylar?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, sorry, I was on mute.
All right, let's just go ahead. So I'm going to review just the goals that we had and then kind of tell you how we did throughout the year. So our first goal for academic proficiency was to be able to show a 10% increase in the number of students scoring at grade level in the area of reading for grades one and two. When I presented in the winter of last year, we realized that like the, the number sizes one and two is kind of small. I will show you how we did and performed there, but we also looked at the whole school K to six and making sure that we made a 10% increase for all students and all grade levels in reading. So looking at the results, there's a lot here, so I'm going to explain a little bit about what, what you're seeing. So when we get results from iReady, it breaks up how the students do in tier one, tier two, and tier three. For tier one, the green, the students meet or exceed, so that's where we want our students to be. The yellow is that there's one year behind or below grade level. And in the red, it's two or more grades below. So when looking at the overall average of our students in the green for tier one, for the students to be or exceed, in the fall, we were at 28%. In the winter, we were 40%. And at the end, we were at 56%. We could kind of see how well we did with tier two and tier three. So I wanted to kind of show you how we did across the board with all grade levels. And the next slide shows specifically, how did we do in the increase? And what is the overall increase from fall to spring? So you can see in grade one, we went from 10% to 24%. So the increase was 14%. For grades two, we went from 12 to 44, which is a 32% increase. So we met the goal. But we also wanted to take a look at the overall average for fall was 28%. And in the spring was 56%. So you could see that we had 28% increase for grades K through six.
Skylar raised his hand, Brooke.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell you, Brooke, that you're still presenting my last slide. So for the sake of the recording, I don't know if you wanted to just fix that, it's just a little snafu. Wanted to make sure that, yeah, there you go, looks good, sorry.
Thank you. So that is showing that we've made our, the goal of having a 10% increase. So the summary, I kind of stated that there are less kids in tier three columns, so I wanted to show you that out. So our, in the fall, we had 27% of our kids two years or more below. And by the spring, we only had 9%, so it's worth noting. And then just in general, we're seeing the percentage of students, you know, being able to increase in the tier one. And we met the goals we had set for them. The second goal we had was our for safe, safe and healthy on schools. And our hope was to have a 10% increase in students being able to name their feelings and learn how to regulate themselves based on the results of our student survey. In the winter, I showed it for the first time, how did our students kind of rate themselves? I can talk about how I'm feeling. We had 45.2% of our students agree that they can do that. 20% disagreed and there were 34% that were neutral. In May, we asked the students the same questions. And you can see for the agree went to 30%. Disagree was 29% and the neutral was 40%. So we actually saw a decrease in students being able to talk about how they're feeling. The second question we posed is, I can control myself when I'm sad, angry, or mad? And we had students, 51.4% of our students agreed. We had 12.4 disagreed and 36.2 were neutral. And then this brain, we asked them the same question and it actually went down to 47.9% that agreed, 15.6 disagreed and 36.5 were neutral. So our summary was that when we compared the winter to the spring, our students did not meet our goal of having a 10% increase of students being able to name their feelings and learn how to regulate themselves based on the student survey. I did want to share that the student survey was challenging in a lot of ways this spring. What the students didn't complete at all, they didn't count them. You had to actually do all of the, the pieces. And so there were some students that didn't submit. So we had less students completing the survey in the spring than in the fall. And we did do it different times throughout the spring. Because guidance wasn't throughout the year, some kids did it in March, some did it in April and some did it in May. And we had actually doing it pretty independently. So we learned a lot through the survey and we will be having a survey coming out this, for the BRSU. We've heard Skylar kind of talk about it. And I hope it is to make sure that we're scaffolding and supporting students as a completing the survey versus doing it maybe as a whole class and being able to make sure all kids are answering every question so they can submit it. Our plan this year is to have guidance classes K to six for each week throughout the whole year. And we're also planning on using a different student survey that will be consistent across the BRSU. I wanted to point out our SBACK data. That was something that's kind of, kind of tone for you understood kind of what it is. But in our results, it's hard to really see. I'm going to make it bigger, hoping to see a little better, not really. The, the big parts I kind of wanted to kind of share with you is there were 76, 76 students that actually took the assessment grades three through six. And you can kind of see a little bit of the highlights. So, so the blue is where kids exceed the standard. Green is where they meet. Level two is nearly me and the red is below. Like you can kind of, I'll summarize the actual big pieces in a minute, it's hard to see this. And this is our math. So we did see that we did not perform as well in math compared to reading. So here's the summary. In grades three through six, students scored a level three was 25% or four, 20% with a total of 45. So what Skylar kind of showed in a graph prior to this is our districts for, for grades three through eight actually were 48% and we were at 45%. So comparing that, the district to us, and then in the state, he also reported it was at 48%. So we're slightly below the district and the state. The percentage of students who scored a level one was 11%. This percentage of students who scored a level two, which is nearly meeting is 36%. The percentage of students who scored a level three, which meets is 25%. And the students who scored a level four was 20%. For math in grades three through six, Meadowwee students scored a level three with 18% and a four is 11% with a total of 29%. And the BRSU districts for grade, for the grades three through six was 30%. We're just 1% below that. And the percentage of students who scored a level one is 26%. The percentage of students who scored a level two is 46%. And the percentage of students who scored a level three was 18%. And the percentage of students who scored a level four is 11%. With a lot of information I presented, but in general, we could tell that our math is not as good as reading. Now, I'm going to kind of show the spring information of iReady. We really appreciate how they break it down. It's hard to see there, but phonological awareness is the very top, which is a area of strength for our school. Phonics is the second one down. High frequency words is probably our second best area that we're performing. Vocabulary, comprehension literature, and then comprehension informational texts. From there, you could see if you put the two greens together, that kind of shows the amount of students that are meeting or exceeding. We have 30, 37% of our students on one grade level behind. And then we have in the red, 10% of our students that are two grade levels or more behind. So here's a summary, 56% of our students met or exceeded. And I already kind of read out the other ones. The area of strengths is phonological awareness and high frequency words. Areas to improve vocabulary and comprehension of informational texts. That's what we learned from that.
I would also just jump in and say that I think it's important to note that in the areas of phonics and phonological awareness, those are the two areas that we've implemented consistent curriculum across all of our schools. So those areas of strength are also tied to the areas in which we've got curriculum in the hands of all of our teachers. We provide a training that's consistent across our K to two and this year, K to three grade level. So there is a nice correlation there between areas of strength in our programming and performance of our kids and having a consistent curriculum for our kids.
Results for math. Similarly, you could see the first one is numbers and operations. That would be our area of strength. Algebra is the second one. Number, measurement and data is the third. And geometry is the last, and that's the area that we probably perform the least. And looking at that, 48% of our students met or exceeded. 43 of our students are one year behind. 6% of our students are two years behind. And 3% of our students are three or more years behind. Strengths in numbers and operations and algebra. Areas to improve geometry and measurement and data. And just to make a statement about geometry, it seems like when we met with the iReady folks that across the nation, that's kind of an area that schools didn't tend to perform well. And similarly, that's what's usually taught in the spring. And we had closure on year 2020. That was an year that we probably didn't teach as in-depth. And then this past year, I'm in school, really focused a lot on numbers and operations and algebra and not as much on geometry and measurement. But it's important for me to talk to staff about that, our staff meeting tomorrow, just to talk about ways to make sure that we're implementing measurement and data and geometry within our schedule. So here's the outcome, which I already stated, those are the results.
And I will, yeah. Let's go and do your goals for this year based on what you just shared and then we'll just do all of it. And, and if you can present it, it might be easier to just do it so that it's easier thing for folks to see. So a little bit bigger for those of you who are.
Yep.
Okay.
So I wanted to say that I'm very proud, a proud moment is that all the pictures within this slideshow I received from teachers over the weekend. And they're all new pictures from this year. Like I'm quite impressed with the amount of pictures.
Brooke, you're muted and we can't hear you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how long you were up for.
We were in, yeah, but we couldn't hear her present.
For how long?
Um, for seven minutes or so.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I don't know why this went to sleep or why it.
No, it it wasn't that. It wasn't that. It was um she must have accidentally hit the mute button or or pressed the spacebar or something when she was presenting.
But the audio is on my computer and my computer was asleep when I looked at it.
Oh.
That computer.
So.
Oh, oh, right. Yeah, yeah.
Thanks. But that's why we lost the audio because it was on my computer.
Yep. You all have, um, both you and Brooke have text messages that I'm like, we can't hear you just so you don't get alarmed later on.
I use my hands.
Yeah. Um, yeah, sorry about that. I um, and none of us were looking at my computer. We were all looking at Brooke in the presentation. But you could see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So she was reading what's there. So it's not that you're that far off the sort of game, I guess. So let's, we'll try to keep an eye on this. I'll try to keep an eye on this. So do you want to, we'll open it up to board members for questions for a few minutes, if that makes sense, and and any part of it, either for Skylar or or for Brooke. Go ahead, Scott.
Uh, Skylar, I had a question. Um, you showed a bar graph where, you know, it showed uh kind of the level of scoring. Kind of the this started two thousand fifteen.
I think it's fourteen, fifteen school year, right? Yeah, this one, right?
Five, six years, yeah. And what I was alarmed, I mean, obviously, there's the dip last year, which you'd expect, but just this consistent kind of decline. Um, right, almost. I mean, there's, you know, but for the most part, it's just this downward trend. I'm just wondering, um. You know, obviously, you've been kind of looking at this data. I mean, is there any thoughts on why that that kind of? Would do we change curriculum or do something that would have caused that? Because it's just strange that it's not kind of randomly up and down. It's just this kind of decline. And I guess that's why we did change the I ready, you know, maybe noticing this, but.
Yeah, I would say, um, so curricular resources certainly is uh could be looked to as a part of a reason for it. Um, I know that uh the Common Core really kind of hit schools heavy in the like thirteen, fourteen school year. Um, is when it started to become more prevalent. And uh this assessment itself is the change in venue uh from a paper-based assessment to a computerized assessment. Um, but I mean, o- over time, right? So theoretically, there are six lines, but it represents seven years because one year was not there. So if uh if we think about the COVID year shutdown, we can with reasonable certainty anticipate where that student performance would end up. And it's somewhere between for math, between forty three percent and thirty percent. Um, I would say in my experience in looking at the state, um. Kind of scores that it's relatively consistent with the state scores that have kind of drooped as well. Um, it's interesting. It's an interesting phenomenon. I'm not necessarily sure the why. Um, but I do know what we are planning on doing to try and um combat the increasing decline year to year.
Understand. Was there a switch over from more paper testing to computer testing during that time period?
No, so it happened in the fourteen, fifteen year. So that's and then declined. So that it wasn't that that I under that's so. Right. So this is, this is concerning to me. Um, when we get to my evaluation, look at my goals, you'll have a better understanding of why my goals are what they are.
Right.
Um, because it's responding to concerns around performance of our kids. And and I'm being much more transparent. We are being much more transparent in our communication of performance with everyone. Um, because, because I think it's important that we're talking about this and that we are asking that question of why, what might be happening? And um, and if we're not talking about it and we're not attending to it, then we don't necessarily notice these trends. So.
You said that somewhat consistent, that decline with the state. How about um is it somewhat consistent with national?
So S back actually is not a national assessment. It's one of um kind of, I I mean, it is in a sense that states can opt into it. Um, the other alternative is called the Park Assessment, which existed in New England for a while. Uh, but nationally, we don't necessarily have an apples-to-apples comparison, um, nor are we provided access to that data.
That's right. I that's, I think, the answer to your question. There are many, many states to take S back because it's a nationally required test, either Parker S back. But we don't have access to this national data of other states that take S back, correct?
Right.
Yeah, we only have access to Vermont. So we only can compare to Vermont versus nationally S back.
Well, but there is national testing done also, right?
Yeah, and in the form of the N A P assessment.
The N A P assessment.
Do you notice a similar decline in that uh both our school statewide and nationally? I'm just curious if there's a similar trend.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm Skylar. I have we looked at N A P in that way?
I don't believe, I mean, we're not provided N A P uh in a usable way, but like there is no portal in the same way that there is S back. So it would do, it would require some data collection and then comparison. Um, when I, to get more specific, when I think about the math, the math graph, and I and I think about in terms of curriculum. Um, the current curricular resource we use for mathematics is about six years old. Um, and that would line up with the decline in performance, but I'm not necessarily alluding to it being the cause of that. But that just isn't noticing that I kind of hadn't really put together until um confronted with the data right now.
So uh as mentioned before, the reading curriculum was kind of standardized across the district. But the ma- is the math the same way?
It is. So, well, so, so two different things. Our broad math curriculum, as Skylar just said, is you know, is consistent across our schools. It began about the same time, and we've seen this decline. In E L A, our, our, our primary English language arts curriculum was also started about a a year or two before this. Um, the the specific curriculum that I was referring to, Hegarty and Foundations. Target K to two, those very specific skills in phonological awareness and phonics. So those two are not holistic, comprehensive curriculums.
Yes.
But, but I think to Skylar's point, you will see in my goals that curriculum review is a top priority for us. Um, I feel like that's a critical step for us to take right now. So we are going to be reviewing information like this. How uh guaranteed and viable has our curriculum been? How effective? What does our data show for performance for our students? Is it, we're going to look at it through an equity lens. Does it, you know, does it meet all the check marks we want for an equitable curriculum? All of that will help us decide whether we should continue with what we've got or look at something different. This is certainly a piece of data that we'll be looking at um as we explore math in the L A this year and next year. You'll see my goals.
I guess I'm just going to make one more comment because I've already taken up a lot of time, but just.
And this is going to be the S U. This is going to be the deep dive at the S U level, too, if you feel like coming to that.
I guess I was asking that question of like national trend versus state trend versus our trend, just because. You know, that's a fairly broad time period of five or six years. And I'm just wondering, is is there possibly some overarching thing that's, you know, like distraction from all the screens and stuff? And uh, you know, could that, could there be a bigger thing if there is a decline nationally in the same way? Not that you're going to drop it specifically locally, but um, I don't know.
It's a good, that's a good, a good thing. I mean, Skylar, it probably is worth us exploring whether or not we can get access to some of those national trends.
Yep, absolutely.
Anything specific around Metowee and the goals that Brooke shared with you for the school this year or last year?
I just had a quick question on the the survey. It seemed like last year. You didn't necessarily feel that you had that much of a. Of an issue as far as kids, like, understanding their feelings and talking through them so much as the survey. The quirks of the survey. So I assume that there's. Something in place to prevent that from happening again.
Yeah. So I definitely feel like when we, there's so many things that kind of went down when we did it a second time around. First time, we felt like we collected it in a much better way, but in the spring, we ended up having to do like a survey for K to two and one for three through six. And I was comparing all of that, but there were just these glitches that I don't remember that we did in the wintertime. Um, but we do have a measure, the one, um, well, first of all, that survey that we're doing looks completely different. It's a scale. It's very different. So one through five. And I think it's going to be much easier for the kids to click and do compared to ours is a lot more questions and they would do a lot more reading. Um, and we definitely will put things in place K to two. I feel like they they were kind of on their own to do a little more. Maybe it would be better to have a smaller group doing it or just to be able to oversee it easier. But it will be done in guidance class and it will be done by the same person for all, but we'll give support to make sure it's done in a reliable way.
And that will be part of the guidance class, which is like regularly done versus last year when there were blocks.
Absolutely. I also think in general, I do think that the social emotional piece is a huge part, and I think kids need. Uh, weekly and daily when we have interactions, and I feel like this is going to be a huge focus. We have kids that were at a distance all last year, and we're already seeing social dynamics having to be worked out through the guidance counselor and I. So I think this is going to be an area that we're going to really focus on is teaching them about stating their feelings and how um to make good decisions. And talk about conflict resolution and what will they do next time? And it's part of the work that's happening weekly in our school. But I think having the kids um be taught the skills in different scenarios will be really beneficial for them.
So we'll be administering this survey to everyone in October and in March across the whole S U. Um, we wanted to make sure that everyone access had access to a valid and reliable metric. This one's had a lot of um, a lot of use behind it. And uh, I think one of the things that I like is you see, if you look on the sheet, that the, that all the questions are broken down into four different areas. Whether students feel accepted, treated fairly, appreciated, and validated. And so at a school level, Brooks can be able to see patterns and trends within her building about how her students feel. At a, at a class level, teachers will be able to see individual responses. They won't know who they are. But they'll, they'll have a sense of whether there are peaks or valleys and 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 be able to adjust. Adjust the work that they're doing in order to build and and to talk openly about it, you know, people. You, you don't feel like you're treated fairly here. I saw that in your responses. Let's talk about that. Let's talk about ways we can create a community that in which people feel like they're treated more fairly and what might that look like and feel like. Um, so it's not just guidance, right? It's going to be ongoing community building in order to create a culture of belonging in our classrooms. That's the intent.
And the survey will have, it'll be broke down by school, by grade. It'll be, it'll be great to have that data to be able to have a conversation.
Yeah.
And you thought about this one that was, yeah.
That's the one we're going to be doing. Yeah, I'm probably going to collect those from you at the end, but I wanted you to have a sense of what this is actually, they're actually the questions. And it's on a one to five Likert scale.
I like the questions. They're well thought out.
Well, right. And that's just it. We shouldn't be designing our own questions. We want to use a tool.
Yeah.
That is valid and reliable so that it actually gives us information that's useful.
There's a couple of them that I'm, but I'm unsure like how, I can see how they can be perceived in different ways.
Yeah.
Like teacher, like number nine, teachers here are not interested in people like me. Like, what does that mean?
Well, so for.
Is it, you know, speaking as, you know, a person of color, is that like people like me, like other Hispanic people? Or is it people like kids my age? Like how, well, how are the kids, that question could be perceived many different ways.
Absolutely. We talked about that one in particular.
And I feel very different from most of the students here.
Right.
Sometimes that could be a positive thing. Like, yeah, I don't want to be in the sea of sameness as everyone, and I want to be different.
Mm hmm.
So it's a couple of them are really confusing.
Yeah.
Or they lead to conversation.
Which is always a good thing. I I believe conversation should be that, should be had. I just like those are two that stuck out to me like which, how was this meant?
Right.
To be taken, because then according to your goals, it could really fluctuate depending on how the kids perceive the questions.
Mm hmm. Yeah. Anything else on this? So you will be hearing an update uh mid-year, February or March. On on the Metowee School Goals and progress towards achieving those as well as the S U Goals and Progress. It'll be after our ready assessment window and after that we've had a chance to analyze it. So depending on when your meeting, your date in February is, it might be February, but it might be March. Okay? All right, Skylar, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Feel free to stay if you'd like, but also feel free to head on out.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I have, I'm asking you to approve a one-year extension to the staff agreement. It expired last year, so the staff has requested that we extend it. There's no changes at all. And this is not teachers, this is support staff. Okay? So it's parent educators, custodians, some custodians, bus drivers, uh kitchens and kitchen staff. So it's all of our support staff. No changes to any part of it, just a request to extend it. So I need you to vote to approve this and then, and then uh we'll get it to Julie to sign. So the negotiation team will be meeting this year to revise and amend and update it for implementation.
Motion to.
Yeah, could I get a motion? Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion? Okay. Um, all those in favor of approving the one-year extension, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. Thank you, everybody.
Um, okay, so the next item is my monthly update. I do want to add in here for your information as a board. Um, there was some confusion around transportation and communication, particularly for students who don't. Students who reside in Palat Arupert and do not attend the Metowee School, whom you transport. So I just want to communicate to the board that um we've cleared things up on our ends. Um, and the process is that the Betcha Bus Company, who is experiencing staffing shortages, as we are. Um, will communicate with Derek and with the school. If there is an issue with a bus route being a timing or even the ability to run. The school is then responsible for communicating with the families. Okay? So it's not something that involves the Metowee Community School in any way. It's not anything that involves you as a board. But I did not include that in here. It's just that the update was too late after it had already been submitted. So process is if there's an issue with the bus company, they communicate with Derek, Chalmers, and with the school. School communicates with families. Okay, so if anybody comes to you or you hear anything, I just wanted you to be updated on that. Um, yeah, and we're continuing um to, you you see everything. The only thing I'll say, Julie asked me about this, and so I'll share it with the whole board. Um, you know, we are concerned about sort of Betch's ability to fulfill the obligations of their contract. So we're going to be meeting with them, not with them, we're going to be meeting internally so that I have a better understanding of what is and isn't happening. And I'll be spending some time exploring what our best route forward is as we look ahead, and I don't have an answer to that right now. I don't have enough information, but I want you to know that I'm going to be engaging in conversations with our folks. And it is likely that you will see information come to me sometime over the next couple of months, probably pre-budget or at budget time. Um, with where things currently stand and what my recommendations are. I'm concerned about transportation all the way around, and I think uh if I, you should hear that I'm concerned.
What, what are your concerns?
Staffing, people to ride the bu, drive the buses primarily, consistency. Derek and Greg, um, Greg Harrington, Derek Chalmers are both driving regular routes. We do not have subs. There, I've got Derek, Greg driving a better route for us. And, and so we are on, we are like a thread that is coming undone. We've had all of our schools communicate, all of our, the RSU schools communicate to families that there is a chance that we will have to cancel a run. And we apologize for that upfront. We want you to know that.
It's a labor.
It's a labor issue. Mm-hmm. So we are going to be looking at this as creatively as we can as we look ahead. Like I said, you'll hear more about it. But I, I, I don't know what, you know, we, we can't, we're willing to do a lot, but people aren't.
So currently, if a, a bus driver needed to quarantine, we would be possibly not running that route.
If somebody is homesick unexpectedly for one day, you might not be running that route. So, um, I just want you to be aware of that and know that we're doing everything we can. Okay? As you have seen, we've had COVID cases. They're continuing. Um, I expect them to continue for a while and we're going to do the best we can with that. But I'll keep you updated as a board. So I'm open to talking about anything else with you, um, that you would like. Um, the only other thing is that even just today, um, I put in here tuition for religious schools. I'm still working through this. I just talked to Dina Atwood, our attorney today, and, um, I'm, I'm not entirely sure that this is actually what i- is the right thing to do. We're, you as a board aren't facing this right now. Um, if you were, I would likely be off, asking for executive session for us to talk through some details. But I will be talking to, to TNG, because I've got a situation with them and, um, some really difficult decision-making on this topic and no clear path forward. And I myself am having my own challenge in, in determining the next right step. So just be aware of that. You'll hear more at a later point.
On the labor shortage, um, are you concerned as well with substitute teachers? Or is that a better scenario than bus driver?
Literally today, our HR department said to me, you should know, we lost two subs today. Um, they're monitoring it. There are not a lot of subs. There's not a lot of subs to teachers. That's going to continue to affect, I mean, we're still down paras.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, yes, we're down subs. We're going to continue to try to incentivize that and recruit people as much as we can.
We have two people apply today and a new person finished their paperwork. So Metowee has a few that are ready to go, but that, we still meet uncertain days with a lot of people. Um, I didn't mention that in, when you made in our comments, but we are starting an after school program at Metowee. It's an amazing opportunity for our families and it's going to start next Monday.
It's good. That's a big accomplishment.
Just you ding, so I didn't know there was an issue. Sorry. Can you hear me now?
I don't think so. I just see Skylar, yes.
Does anyone else have any comments for my distribution?
Just, I mean, on the, on the, like, not repeated at worst, but on the staffing issue, it's one thing, I mean, it's a really, really, really unfortunate thing if we couldn't run a full bus route, but there'd be at least a shot, right, of getting most kids in. But what's our backup plan if we don't have a sub and we don't have a grade level operating?
I think for the sub part, if we really were in irony, which it sounds like people, quite a few people that are parents that are getting paperwork was amazing. A lot of people on the first day after, the first day breakfast came and asked for paperwork. But I would say that we would have to like problem solve that day and there might be certain things that we'll just have to make sure, um, we're plowing people in these positions just to cover.
Right. Our schools have done absolutely an unbelievable job. They did an unbelievable job last year when we did not have enough subs making it work. So principals, support staff, people come together and they've rallied and made it work. It has not been easy and has not been simple and has not been out stress. But despite not having subs many, many, many times last year, we made it work.
So it's not like, you're not foreseeing like every fifth grader getting a phone call, don't come in today.
I do not expect that. Principals have heard me say, we got to figure this out and then they've done it.
And for the bus drivers, that's more like you have to have the operator's license. So it's, it's not like somebody can step in.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
And we, we have some drivers for our vans that do not have their CBL license, so we can't move those people over. Um, we're talking about, can we get some of those folks trained? And so we're starting, you know, to kind of look at some of that, but there, it's not as simple as that in some cases. Um, but yeah.
What the national shortage too.
It's an, yeah, I was going to say that I've seen countless news stories about a lack of busing everywhere.
My entire drive up to work and back, you see need features, need drivers, need teacher, need subs, need drivers.
It is everywhere.
Restaurants and man's bus garage and twenty-five and thirty-five dollars an hour for dishwashers and they can't fill a position.
On a positive note, we had a lot of parents in our building for, um, parent breakfast and parent night, and it was really nice to have, um, the teachers and parents make connections early on this year was just fabulous.
That was, that was really good. That was, that was really good coming in and seeing the parent, uh, seeing the parents and being back in the building really felt good.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you both. I think we're ready for the art presser.
Ready? Cynthia, did you have anything you wanted to add before we?
I'm good.
Okay. Um, all right, so I'm going to have Brooke pull up my, uh, this presentation. Now, I want to let you know that, um, that the community engagement work we're doing on this, Bob is keeping really, um, really great data on. So we've, we've sent this presentation, uh, and a form out to all families across the SU and we're getting feedback from them, which is terrific. Um, the purpose of this is for me to share with you what our initial investments are that we're submitting to the Agency of Education and, um, to also hear ideas or recommendations from you. These are, um, this is our third wave of Esser funding. So if they were public here, we'd be engaging with them at this point, but instead I get to engage with you, which is just as good, but a little bit different. So, um, so we've reached Bob, like fifteen hundred people maybe with this information so far. Are you there?
Yeah.
Bob? No, okay. Okay.
He left, yeah.
Yeah, he left, okay. Anyway, I don't know how many, but it's a lot and we're, he's keeping very good time.
He's back.
You're back.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I hit the, I left the meeting rather than unmuted. Um, just, um, be, across the whole BRSU, we've reached almost fifty-seven hundred people. Uh, but that's with, you know, it's emails from the schools, like, like Brooks sent out emails last week to the families and, uh, you know, some social media posting and et cetera. So we've reached a lot of people, yes.
Thank you. So what, um, I, I also probably have a couple of things. We're continuing to tweak this and continuing to add to it, so this isn't completely up to date. But I'm going to talk to you about the, the, the process through this presentation and then you'll see our, what we're submitting initially and then I'll, um, we can have a conversation about any other ideas you might have. So this is the third pot of Esser money. We had Esser one, then we had Esser two, and now we have ARP Esser. And that stands for the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. This is the largest pot of money given to school districts for pandemic recovery. Go ahead, Brooke. So, um, so every state is receiving these federal funds based on last year's Title One funding allocation. Okay? So that's how it's derived. State takes ten percent and then the not, the remaining ninety percent goes to each of the LEAs based on that Title One eligibility. So this is important because this was, I generally learn when you do this presentation, we aren't given the money. Um, what we have to do is an incredibly complicated process. This is part of the process, is community, um, engagement, giving, getting community input, sharing with them, engaging in the community. And then we have to, for every single investment that we're doing, we have to submit it individually, make sure it meets the criteria, write a narrative, so there's specific criteria of what we can actually use this money on. You know, make sure it's a qualifying investment, give them the narrative that they want. We submit it, they then have to review it. Often will give us feedback. They, they send it back to us for revisions for some, something. And then eventually they approve it and then they pay us for that investment. Okay? So that's how, that's how the process works. So our allocation for this is about three point four million dollars. All right? We have until the end of September in twenty twenty-four to spend this money. And, um, I linked the guidance, which is, this is all on our website. So the guidance tells us how we can use the money. And so as I said, it has to fall within the allowable uses domain. The, the Department of Education establishes those. The state has their ability to filter and make sure that the investment is allowable. They decide whether it will be approved or not approved. Okay? Um, okay, so we want investment, we want input. We're required to collect input every six months. So we're doing it now. We're also going to collect input again in March. We're going to probably be shooting for this September and March timeline up until the time that we are done with our, um, we've, we've used all of our money.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, unless we spend it all before then.
Yeah.
So, so here are, uh, initial investments. Now, we are going to be making submissions, uh, in hopefully the beginning of October, although we're still waiting on information from the Agency of Education. Again, in January and then again in March after we do our six-month community engagement window. So this is what we're putting in so far. Uh, we want to be able to support after-school enrichment for our students. So this is an initial investment of forty-five thousand dollars for hopefully us to be able to use like January through May. We can adjust any of our numbers once we have approval. So Sue and I estimated costs based on staffing costs, materials and supplies and transportation. But if we find that there's a huge need and a huge interest and that forty-five thousand isn't enough, we can easily go in and amend and request additional money. And because they've already approved the investment, that it won't be a problem as long as we have money remaining. Um, our, we can, had instructional leadership training, the leadership team, uh, three years ago now with the University of Washington. They have the Center for Educational Leadership, uh, which is called CEL, and they are one of the top instructional leadership, um, programs in the country. So we started this work and then we never completed it. I feel as if our, our, I want to continue to build the capacity of our leaders in instructional practices and instructional leadership. So I'm investing, uh, money for us to be able to do two more years with the University of Washington out of this pot, which will hopefully bring us to the completion of that training. We are going to be partnering with Outright Vermont this year, um, to continue equity training for our teachers and staff. Outright Vermont is an LGBTQT plus advocacy group and they will be working with our teachers to build capacity and understanding and comfort with navigating the complexities of, um, you know, inter, understanding more about the intricacies of the LGBTQT plus population, how to best support them and to, um, create a community that is very inclusive for, for all of our students. So that's going to happen this year. That two thousand dollars is just to support that investment, that, that service and support. Flexible seating, there are a number of, of our schools that have asked because we're trying to, um, shift away from fabric and material-based, uh, seating and materials because we know that those capture, you know, bacteria, viruses, germs into non-porous. So I expect this will also increase because I think that it's a, only a couple of our schools ask for it now. I expect that more will in time. It makes sense for us to make that shift and use these funds to do so. So you're going to hear more in my, um, in my, uh, evaluation about curriculum. We want this year, um, to be starting, uh, partnering with, having, having teachers work with us to review our current curriculum for effectiveness and to help determine whether or not we should make a change. And then if we are, help us determine what we should be shifting to. So I have, I am including right now three hundred thousand dollars to pay for, uh, MOAs for us to be able to have teachers be a part of this work with us so we can have teams committed to this and being paid for their time. And we just put in, we are expecting it's to have to make some type of purchase, so we're putting three hundred thousand dollars to cover costs. That's a shot in the dark right now, but at least we get the investment in there and have the opportunity to get it, um, approved early on. Uh, one of our schools requested an out-of-place space, which is, um, sort of a, a place for some real collaborative opportunities between different groups of students. It's really tied to the social emotional needs of our kids and creating structured opportunities for them to connect and, um, develop social skills with each other, across grade levels and, and classrooms. So those, um, those, that first group was not positions. This is a population of positions that we're putting in. I'm very hesitant to fund positions out of these, this pot of money because, um, we do, people struggle when you have positions and then you take them away. And we only have funding until September of twenty twenty-four. So we're only looking at a couple of years, well, three years of, of need. So we are very, very careful about this. I'm going to kind of walk through what's in here, um, but please understand that the expectation is that these positions will not continue, okay? But once the funding source ends. So we have an MTSS coordinator. That position has been hired for two years with the sole primary purpose of, I guess it's really just sole purpose, of building, uh, equitable and effective.
No voice. Moot.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Did you, do you know how long ago it went live? Did it just go?
Yeah.
Oh, you can't see it on my screen.
I'm good.
Okay. Um, so um, I guess my last. Yeah. So that's, that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about what we're looking at investing, but even more importantly than that is thoughts or ideas that you have that you think we should consider. I will obviously have to take that and filter it through, through the school, um, but to filter it through whether or not it's actually allowable cost. So.
Yeah, I have a question. So I recall, I think it was at a B R S U meeting about like, and I think it was like knowing this was coming down the pipeline about um, one of the things that you were required to do was sort of like give, present, present a need, give the data that supported that need. And then one of the biggest roadblocks that you had was a lack of data collection systems.
Yeah.
So is that addressed here?
So that is, nope. So that's different. So that has to do with our recovery plan.
Okay.
So the recovery plan is a part of the pandemic recovery and you'll see all that information getting on our website, but it's not part of ARP E S R.
Okay.
It's not a part of this particular funding.
I have a question. Do that, does, does it qualify for this particular funding?
What?
Um, I mean, a data system.
Oh, Edge climber?
And whatever you might come up with.
So. So. You're, you're, the question is, is complicated. So what, what Julie's referring to is, I see Cynthia, you're going to be on in a second. Okay? So what Julie is saying is that when we had to do our recovery plan last April, May, June, we found that we didn't have really consistent data sources across our school and it, and we hadn't collected a lot of data last year and um, and we struggled to, to write smart goals based on data that we set goals for. So actually, a lot of what you're seeing right now is a response to that. So for instance, this belonging survey, we had nothing that we could use to look at any social emotional skill across our schools. So we are doing this because we think it's what's best for kids and we are now going to have a valid and reliable metric that we can look at across our system this year as well as looking longitudinally. So that's a response to what you're talking about. We um, also didn't have a, a warehouse, a place in which we stored all of our data. So right now, if Skylar's on here, Skylar and Bjorn and Berent spend a ton of time trying to pull data together for us. Um, Brooke just went to B J asking for help. I go today. He's like, I wish we had Edge climber. So we have, we have invested not through ARP E S R, but through I think E S R two, maybe E S R one in Edge climber, which is it's a warehouse system for all of our data. So you'll see that also reflected in my goals. This transparency that you're seeing tonight about our goals, about our data. Right? You, we don't often share this. We haven't historically shared data the way we just did tonight. This is also our uh, addressing what you're talking about, working with our principals, working with uh, our, our, our boards and our schools to say, let's be making evidence-based decisions. Let's be looking at the data. And so that when we have to set goals, we have a consistent data source to do it. So so all these practices that were, you're seeing now are a result of that moment of, oh my gosh, we really don't have a lot to work with here. Does that make sense? That was a really good question.
Did use money to purchase the warehouse.
For Edge climber, yeah.
You used E S R money, but not this.
That's right. Right.
So you're, and you feel confident that you have enough?
Enough money or enough?
Enough new data collection systems or ideas or, or investments.
I feel confident that at this moment, we are doing all the right things. We will know, I will know within a year whether we have enough or whether we need more. Um, there's all, there's layers of work we're doing in order to try to get more consistency. All right, Cynthia.
So uh, I, I was um, I cannot hear about this future, future investments. So the future investment is not going to do right now is next time?
Correct. So I didn't have, I didn't have the numbers for this yet.
Okay.
Or details. So Skylar and Paul Eaton, our Director of Student Services are working with the Stern Center to try to figure out the costs associated with this training. They've had so much going on that they just couldn't get the details yet. So I said, let's just push it. I knew we weren't going to be providing the training before, you know, the spring anyway. So.
But they, like they were to Gillingham, so they don't have this money in, on this money this time. It's going to be the next time. How this works?
Yes. Yep. We're not making the request until January because I don't know how much to request and I don't know exactly what we're requesting yet.
Okay. Okay. It's important and on the only intervention. Yeah.
Uh, it is. And I'm glad you recognize that because I'll need that, you know, that voice is important.
Yeah.
Yes, supporting that.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And students that um, have you during Gillingham, we've seen major progress for our students.
Yes, I agree.
Mm-hmm. And so it's, we know that if we can get our teachers trained in those practices and principles, it will, it will reach everyone and not become a intervention and remediation. It can be something that is afforded to everyone at the time that they need it in the classroom, which they all deserve.
And not many schools they have offered that item right now, you know?
Yeah. This is, this is going to be well worth whatever it costs us, I think, because it's going to pay long-term dividends.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure. Any other thoughts or comments about it?
Well, one of the thoughts I, I had is we were just talking before about some of the drivers needing their certifications for uh, for the buses. Could you make the request for their certification through this?
Yeah, maybe.
It's a carrot on a stick. That's a long-term investment.
And we have, we have already done that. We've offered to pay for the C D L for people in the past.
Yeah.
But the idea of being able to, I think we could make a link for it being tied to pandemic because we are shortage based on, you know, that, that, that thread.
Or sign-on bonus.
And so, yeah, we're, we're exploring that whole thing. But if we can put some of those funds in here, then we don't have to pay it locally. So that's a good idea. Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a good consideration for sure. We good? Okay. All right. You can stop sharing if you'd like. Let's try to keep an eye on this forum over here.
Okay.
I can look now because I can see the screen. All right. Thank you. You'll see us go to sleep if we do.
Okay.
So. Okay. So the next is your policies.
Yeah. So next we are, um, this is just moved to policy governance. So and we have to adopt and rescind is kind of just, we're just, we're just replacing um, the P G style policies over the top of our old local policies.
And then, so the, let's do the, yeah, the adoption first and then we'll talk about there someday.
Okay. Could I get an emotion to adopt local policy governance policies one point O to four point seven?
Motion.
Thank you, Anthony.
My second.
I'll give it to you, Cynthia.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, today. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. I'm going to ask for a vote. Uh, hand up and then I. I.
Aye.
Aye. That's everybody.
Congratulations. Big, it's a big moment. So you do deserve the congratulations.
Thank you. And next I would entertain a motion that we rescind um, the local policies as recommended, which it is listed um, on packet page.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. What um, what policies would be gone and what policies would remain? Can I get a motion? Corey, thank you. Thank you, Anthony. Okay.
Do you want discussion?
Um. Yeah, I mean, I just want to point out um, like the, the things that we're keeping. Obviously, we're keeping the mandatory policies because they're mandatory. Um, and then we are keeping what we had for driver's ed, which I know is a, like a big important one for us and also the enrollment of non-resident students, which that was that was a big issue for us. And so we're keeping that, that was set to expire at, I mean, our policy of grandfathering was set to expire to some, some point. So with that policy.
It stays until.
It stays until that day and then we would just drop that policy in general, right?
Correct. Yeah. So you keep it until that date. So what happens is all of these policies that you're rescinding on the top are transferred into procedures. So they're all the same, but the procedures are maintained through the S U and they're all right now already up on the website under procedures. So.
So they're not being gotten rid of. They're just.
Correct.
Going to a different department.
Exactly. So it's important for you to know that, that this is all still in play. They're just no longer policies because they're not policies under policy governance. They're all procedures and you'll see them now. So you have to officially rescind those. Um, and, and identify you're rescinding these, you're keeping these. And then we put in there rescinded policies will be reflected in the S U procedures, which are found on the website. Cause I wanted to make sure you understood that they're all still there. Okay?
So were our motions good enough because this is all laid out in the.
Yeah, it was just.
Okay. Okay. Um, is there any more discussion on this item? Okay, I'm going to go for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good. Yay. Um, and we're going to switch things around a little um, because we are going to be going into executive session for the superintendent evaluation. So we're going to do our board updates pub and public comment now and then we'll stop recording. Okay. So any board updates that anyone would like to share? Okay. Um. Public comment? Somebody out there set up something. Okay, moving on. Um, we are going to um.
Going to go into executive session?
Um, ah, yes. So we'll entertain a motion for executive session and then um, when that motion passes, should it pass, we will hit the stop recording button. Okay?
Motion.
Okay, you guys have arm wrestle?
Uh, going to enter executive session to discuss the superintendent evaluation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Anthony. Any discussions? Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to stop recording. Okay. I think you have to keep the.
Yeah, got it.